Good evening. Before we begin our meeting this evening, Maria Lockwood, an eighth grade student at Harry Hurst Middle School, would like to offer a moment of reflection. And then Mr. Dennis Nocan will lead the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Hi, my name is Maria Lockwood and I'll be representing Harry Hurst Middle School this evening. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for these school board members. Thank you for all that they have done for the children of this parish. Lord, we ask you to continue giving them guidance and wisdom with the decisions they have to make. We pray that you allow this meeting to meet all expectations. Bless all those that are in attendance and allow them to have safe travels home. In your name we pray. Amen. From the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and mission of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Maria, for coming out and offering that moment of reflection for us this evening. And best wishes to you as you enter your eighth grade year at Harry Hurst Middle School. The meeting of the Board of St. Charles Parish Public Schools for Wednesday, July 18th, 2018 is called to order. Good evening and welcome. How time flies. On July 1st, we began a new fiscal year and soon, very soon, we'll be beginning a new school year. It appears that we have 100% attendance of our board members this evening. So Madam Secretary, if you would note that all board members are present. Also in attendance are Superintendent Felicia Gomez-Walker and Executive Secretary for the Board and Superintendent Mrs. Shelley Babino. First item on the agenda this evening, we have item 2.01, which is a resolution in memory of deceased students. And I would ask our distinguished board member from District 5, Mr. John Smith, to present that resolution.
Whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board here in express to the families of the late Elena Renee Izzo and Seth Hunter-Vion, their sincere sympathy in their time of sorrow. And whereas Elena Renee Izzo was a student in the second grade at Mimosa Park Elementary School, and whereas Seth Hunter-Vion was a student in the ninth grade at Harnville High School, now be it further resolved that a page in the July 18th, 2018 Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution and that a copy of this resolution be presented to the Izzo and Vion families. I move approval.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mrs. Savoie. Any discussion on this item? Please cast your vote. No family members are present here this evening, but we will mail copies of the resolution, actually the original resolutions, to the family members. That motion passes by unanimous vote. Moving into our business items, beginning with item 3.01, approval of the minutes of the June 20th, 2018 Board Meeting, the July 9th, 2018 Special Board Meeting, and the June 10th and 11th, 2018 Board Retreat. Move approval. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Okwan. Any discussion on this item? Please cast your vote. That motion passes by unanimous vote. Item 3.02, expulsion appeal of student number one. As per Louisiana Revised Statute Title 17, Section 416, Paragraph C3, B4, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the superintendent or the superintendent's designate. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as ad hoc committee on Monday, July 16th, 2018, at the request of student one's parent to review the decision to expel student number one and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee.
Mr. President, the ad hoc committee met on Monday, as you said, and the ad hoc committee chose to affirm the superintendent's recommendation to expel student number one and to approve that recommendation.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. Alexander, seconded by Mr. Nocan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Okay, that motion carries a seven to zero with one member abstaining. So that motion does carry. Moving on to item 3.03, personnel items. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on July 16th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the personnel items presented to the Board.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoie, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion on this item? Please cast your vote. That motion passes again with all members voting in favor. Item 3.04 is Code of Ethics for School Board Employees, Policy 4.06, second reading and adoption. Upon review of Board Policy 4.06, Conflict of Interest, revisions were necessary to align with recommendations from Louisiana Legislative Auditor's Office. This agenda item was reviewed by the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, June 18th, 2018.
Mr. President, I move that we accept Board Policy 4.06, Code of Ethics for School Board Member and Employees, for the second reading and adoption.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoie, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion on this item? Please cast your vote. That motion passes by unanimous vote. Next, item 3.05, Faithful Performance Bond. The school board purchases various bonds covering the school board and all employees. These are issued as three separate bonds, which will expire July 31st, 2018. The Director of Risk Management and Benefits has received renewal notices from CNA West Insurance for expiring bonds currently in place. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 16th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's strategic plan. The purchase of faithful performance bonds is a good business practice and protects the school board's assets.
Mr. President, I move approval of the purchase of the faithful performance bonds at a cost of $10,249.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Okwan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes by unanimous vote as well. Item 3.06, Renewal of Excess Workers' Compensation Insurance. The district's coverage for excess workers' compensation insurance with NY Magic expires July 31st, 2018. The current plan is a self-insured retention of $500,000 per claim. The Director of Risk Management and Benefits has received a renewal proposal with no increase. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 16th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move approval of the renewal of the excess workers' compensation insurance from New York Marine and General Insurance Company at a cost of $135,084.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Savoie. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes with all eight members voting in favor. Item 3.07, Student Accident and Catastrophic Insurance. The school board has purchased student accident insurance for all students and athletic participants for the past 10 years. Cost of the program is driven by claims experience. The Director of Risk Management and Benefits has received renewal rates from Risk Services of Louisiana Incorporated. The renewal of the current plan comes with no increase in premium from the prior year. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee meeting of the Board on July 16th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move approval of the comprehensive plan with no deductible for student accident insurance with Ameritas Life Insurance Corporation and Catastrophic Insurance with Great America, Great American Insurance Company from Risk Services of Louisiana Inc. at a cost of $132,640.21.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes by unanimous vote. Item 3.08, 2018, 2019 Student Code of Conduct District Handbook. As mandated by Louisiana Revised Statutes Title 17, Section 416.8, an annual review of the St. Charles Parish Public Schools Student Code of Conduct District Handbook was conducted by the Discipline Committee on May 30th, 2018. Recommendations for revisions to the handbook were made by the committee in compliance with Board policies regarding student discipline. This agenda item was reviewed at the Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 16th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move we accept the revisions to the St. Charles Parish Public Schools 2018, 2019 Student Code of Conduct District Handbook.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mrs. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Nocan. Any discussion? I think it would be good if we could have Ms. Smith, Ms. Jerry Smith, come up for the public benefit, maybe if you could touch on the changes that will be taking place.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Gomez-Walker. 2018 changes to the Student Code of Conduct District Handbook align with legislation and BESSE mandates. We didn't have a lot of changes, but I'll go through them one by one. The first change is related to the passage of Act 523, which allows students to now possess bullet-resistant backpacks on the school campus. The next change that families will notice is that there has been a clarifying statement relative to electronic smoking devices added to our student code of conduct. And then our final revision is related to an update in the antidiscrimination policy and grievance guidelines. We think it's important for families to know that during the first week of school, the code of conduct will be reviewed with teachers and students. The code of conduct will also be arriving home in the inbox on the first day of school, and families are encouraged to please review the code of conduct student handbook with their students when it arrives home.
Any questions for Mrs. Smith? Thank you very much, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
Please cast your vote. That motion passes by unanimous vote. Item 3.09, Lease of Property by the Ark of St. Charles. The Ark of St. Charles currently leases wings two and three of the Booty Adult Learning Center and is seeking permission to add Wing One to the lease. Wing One is not needed at the present time for school board use. This item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 16th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the addition of Wing One to the current lease of the Booty Adult Learning Center of the Ark of St. Charles.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nocan, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to ask a question. I don't know who can answer it. But I know it's not a good business practice to lease property at a loss. My question is, is it legal? Somebody answer that.
Could you repeat the question, please?
My question is, can we lease property at a loss? Is it legal?
Yes, and I say that because there are varying factors. This represents the loss in dollars. We would have to also calculate the cost of not leasing it to really compare whether or not it would be a loss. So the answer to the question is, I would need to be advised on that, on whether it's legal to lease it at the rate we're leasing it at. However, to say it's a loss, we'd have to weigh it against various other costs. Then, I know that's not very clear, but...
Mr. O'Malley, the way I see it, leasing not at, leasing at a loss is like giving away taxpayers' money. And I don't think we are allowed to give away taxpayers' money or taxpayers' property.
And that may be correct, Mr. Alexander. The true cost would have to be considered as the apartment, as the, not apartment, excuse me, as the buildings are vacant, there may be additional costs involved. So what we see are the numbers, and what you have here is the projected cost of utilities and the insurance. We may still incur some of those costs, even if it were vacant, maybe not total. But there may be other repair costs that we avoid by having them occupied. So really, to do an evaluation to that extent, we may have to call in some other folks, but so the information presented, I went straight by our real experience on utilities for that building in those terms.
I don't have a problem if we have a empty building sitting there and it's costing us money, but to lease the property to somebody and not even break even, I think that's criminal.
Yeah, I was going to ask you to clarify, because I think the insurance costs are going to be incurred whether we have it vacant or occupied. So I think, you know, it may be considered a loss when you consider the insurance cost that we incur for a property that's occupied, but we're going to incur those insurance costs whether it's occupied or not.
Yes, sir.
Mr. O'Malley, the, in determining the cost of the sale or lease of public property, the rule is that the sale be at fair market value. That's the rule. The rule regarding lease also relates to the issue of fair market value. It has nothing at all to do with your profit and loss when calculating that. I guess my question regarding this issue is, is the lease cost that was established, is it at a fair market value as determined by the other properties of similar value that's being leased in the area?
Yes, sir, it is.
Because that is what the legality point is. It has nothing at all to do with leasing at a cost. If you can get more money, then you get more money, but you've met the rule of the law when you lease it at fair market value as determined by comparative market analysis that's done by a real estate agency.
And we could certainly have that done by a certified real estate appraisal. I know that what we charge is, as owners of other buildings, is that market, and that's why we go to be consistent. We strive for consistency in that.
When, can I speak again? When sometimes people want to use our gymnasiums, and I'm not sure if there's a fee that's involved to use a gymnasium, but they are required to have insurance.
Yes, sir.
Why wouldn't we require someone leasing our property to insure the property?
And that practice has been established long-term, so I couldn't answer that question.
I know your answer is, that's the way we've been doing it, but that doesn't mean it's right. That's my stand on this. I will be opposing this agreement. And I would like somebody to get a legal opinion on if what we are doing, because I notice we're doing it with all of our this property, we're leasing property at a loss, all of our property. We have, we have people who haven't had a raise and who goes, how long? This is money we could be using towards increasing somebody's salary.
Thank you, Mr. O'Malley.
Sure, thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Please cast your vote. That motion passes by a seven to one vote. Item 3.10, Bid Acceptance, Dr. Rodney Orlefond Performing Arts Center Concert Grand Piano. The budget for a concert grand piano for the Dr. Rodney Orlefond Performing Arts Center is $125,000. One bid was received from Hall Piano Company on Tuesday, July 17th, 2018, in the amount of $124,830. Accepting the bid from Hall Piano Company will allow the vendor to order the concert grand piano. A timeline for the bid opening was presented at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 16th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the bid submitted by Hall Piano Company for a concert grand piano for the Dr. Rodney Orlefond Performing Arts Center at a cost of $124,830.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Nocan, seconded by Mr. Robichaud. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes by unanimous vote. Item 3.11, Declaration of Surplus Tools, Equipment, and Furnishings. Various tools, equipment, and furnishings have been identified to be considered as surplus by the Board. The district should declare these items as surplus to allow the Board to dispose of them in accordance with legal requirements. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 16th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's strategic plan. It's a pleasure, the Board.
Mr. President, I move to declare tools, equipment, furnishing as surplus and authorize disposal in accordance with the legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nocan, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion?
Mr. O'Malley, I hate to get you up again, but for public knowledge, this item and the next, this one and the next one, can you describe the process of how we do the
Sure.
The auction for the public knowledge?
Gladly. For several years now, we've used an online auction site. It's publicsurplus.com, and we'll advertise the auction for at least two weeks in the official journal, the Herald-Guy, and then we'll conduct that auction. It'll be online. Registration is free, there's no cost to the individual, and we'd encourage everybody to go take a look.
And again, it's both items, correct? The next item?
That's correct, the next item as well.
The next item is relative to surplus vehicles.
Vehicles, yes, sir.
So that process applies to both.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Savoie.
Sure, thank you.
Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes with all members voting in favor. Item 3.12, Declaration of Surplus Vehicles. Due to age, mileage, and condition, eight vehicles have been identified to be considered as surplus by the Board. The district should declare these vehicles as surplus to allow the Board to dispose of them in accordance with legal requirements. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 16th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move that we declare vehicles as surplus and authorize disposal in accordance with legal requirements.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. Nocan, seconded by Mr. Okwan. Any discussion on this item?
Just one question, Mr. O'Malley, and that is, what is the, what's the age that we establish for the buses?
The legal requirement is that we cannot run buses more than 25 years of age, and so these 1998s are 20 years of age, and the one 1997 is 21 years, so it's time.
So these buses still have about five years, four to five years of operation according to the list that we have here. There's some operational defects?
This is true. If you notice the mileage levels, and even with the age, even though the law... the law allows a maximum of 25 years, it really gets difficult to find parts for them after 20 years. And as I said, every one of those miles is a lot of stop and go, if you can imagine.
And I think you mentioned the other night that there was one vehicle that even needed a new motor.
This is true. There are a total of six school buses, but there are two from our white fleet, two pickup trucks. And those, yes, are in need of repair. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. O'Malley.
Sure.
Any further discussion on this item? Please cast your vote.
That motion passes by an eight to zero vote. Item 3.13, Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire, fiscal year 2018. A statement of total disclosure must be provided to the auditors each time the St. Charles Parish School Board's financial reports are audited. This statement is provided by completion of the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire. As a faithful discharge of the trust placed in the school board by the citizens of St. Charles Parish, a complete disclosure of the district's financial operations is mandated. By completing and approving a Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire, the Board unequivocally demonstrates integrity and openness in its reports and records. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 16, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move that we authorize the Superintendent, the Board President, the Chief Financial Officer to sign audit documents on behalf of the Board.
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Oakland, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. And that motion passes. Item 3.14, accounts payable for the month of June 2018. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 16, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of June 2018 as presented. The total cost of $4,935,927.60.
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Oakland. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes by unanimous vote. Moving into closing items, item 4.01, Standing Committee Reports. Any Chair of a Standing Committee may present a report at this time.
Mr. President, Capital Improvements Committee met on Monday. We had three items, two that were presented to the, I'm sorry, one that was presented this afternoon. It was the lease of property by the park. Two other items, committee only, that was the update on the Dr. Rodney Orloffon Performing Arts Center, as well as the, I'm sorry, I stand corrected, the bid for the grand piano was presented tonight, and that was approved as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nakhan.
Mr. President, the Policy and Personnel Committee met on Monday, July 16. Definitely the personnel hours which are scheduled tonight for table. And also from the June meeting, our Code of Ethics for School Board Employees Policy 4.006, that's secondary, and adoption is approved tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Saval.
Mr. President, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee met on Monday, July 16, 2018. We discussed with Ms. Jeri Smith, the Student Code of Conduct District Handbook, and the revisions that were accepted this evening previously. And we also had a committee-only discussion with Mr. Pevday regarding the 2018-2019 results.
Thank you, Mrs. Bernard.
Mr. President, the Risk Management and Insurance Committee also met Monday, which there was discussion on the bonds, workers' comp, and the student accident catastrophic insurance, which were all approved tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Robichaud. The Finance and Audit Committee met on Monday, July 16, and covered five items. Four of the five items came to the full board during this meeting and were approved. Those items were the Declaration of Surplus Tools, Equipment and Furnishings, the Declaration of Surplus Vehicles, Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire for fiscal year 2018, and the Accounts Payable for the month of June 2018. The other item was the committee discussed the employment status of the before and after, the coordinators for the before and after school care program, and made some changes that will be effective not for this coming school year, but for the following school year. And that concludes my report. So, if there's no other committee reports, we'll move on to item 4.02, which is the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to begin tonight by introducing, acknowledging, and congratulating our new Director of Child Welfare in attendance, Ms. Charmaine Williams. Ms. Williams, she comes at a very busy time of the year, so good luck. We are rapidly approaching the beginning of the 2018-2019 school year. The first day for our students is Thursday, August 9. The first day for our pre-K and kindergarten students is Thursday, August 16. I'd like to note that this is a week earlier than the kindergarten and pre-K students have started school in the past. During the next couple of weeks, we have some final preparations of grounds and facilities. You can expect that our school campuses will be in excellent condition at the beginning of our school year. And once again, we will begin the year meeting the Board's goal of no instructional portables. Throughout the summer, teachers and administrators have been participating in professional development to prepare for our core business of teaching and learning. I'd like to thank school board members, both central office and school staffs. Because of your hard work, commitment, and focus, the St. Charles Parish Public School System is ready and excited for the 2018-19 school year to begin. We understand that communication is critical in the school system's ability to engage parents and families. There are several things that the Public Information Department has prepared to help students, parents, and families get ready for the upcoming school year. First of all, a back-to-school brochure is being mailed to all residents. The brochure includes information on where to find the following: school supply list, excuse me, bus routes, meal prices, dress code guidelines, events and holidays, and school schedules. If you have any questions, please contact the Public Information Department at 985-785-3104. Each year, our students receive an inbox. Ms. Stevie Cravetta, the Director of Public Information, will present this year's inbox. Ms. Cravetta.
Thank you, Superintendent Gomez Walker, and good evening, school board members. I cannot believe another school year has quickly approached and is upon us. And at this time each year, I have the honor to present our 2018-2019 inbox. And Board members and Superintendent, you should have a copy of the inbox at your seat, so please feel free to follow along throughout the presentation. Before I begin with the contents of the inbox, I do want to thank our partners in education, Shell Norco Manufacturing Complex, for its 13th year of supporting funding for the inbox. We are fortunate to have their support from the very beginning of when we first started producing the inbox, which has been quite a few years at this point. In looking at the cover of the inbox folder, you will notice that it features our AAA school district banners standing out amongst the pops of color. The design is eye-catching and abstract and represents a futuristic look, just as the school system is always on the cutting edge of ideas and opportunities and is always preparing students for the future. And the inside flap of the inbox includes an area to keep usernames and passwords for district websites. It's a great tool for parents and is especially helpful for those who have more than one student in the school system. And if you move to the next slide, where we can see the inside flap of the inbox folder, you'll see that the Facebook, Twitter, Vimeo, and mobile app icons appear in this area to inform parents and students of the various methods in which they can obtain information pertaining to the school system. And I'd like to encourage those who haven't done so already to download the school systems app from the App Store to your mobile device. And also, you'll see a spot that references something that is new this school year, which is a notice that informs parents and guardians that our back-to-school forms are now available online to be filled out. This is in an effort to better serve our parents with filling out important information in a more streamlined and efficient way, and it also saves both parents and our school office staffs a lot of time during what is always a very, very busy first few weeks of school. The document slide showcases the different documents that are presented in the inbox, and I will briefly go through those documents at this time. In looking at the emergency guide, St. Charles Parish Public Schools is focused on providing a safe school environment for all of our students, and the emergency guide flip chart does outline what to do in case of emergencies, and is a great reference for parents should an emergency arise. And every student receives an emergency guide, and the cover of the emergency guide also includes another app to download that we have available to parents, and it's that Crisis Manager Safety App. And if you haven't downloaded that app, I'd also like to encourage you to download that, where you can have emergency information and procedures available at your fingertips. And Board members, you might notice that an emergency guide is not in the folder yet. We are awaiting those to be delivered from the printer, but they will be in each inbox for our students on the first day of school. And before I move on, I would like to mention that the emergency guide, as well as all the documents in the inbox, are available on the district's website, and they can be downloaded and printed from there as well under the "For Families" tab. And as I previously mentioned, our back-to-school forms, which are contained in the district documents packets, are now available to be filled out online, and parents can review and submit the pre-completed back-to-school forms through the Power School Parent Portal. And the parent portal also allows parents to monitor school assignments, grades, attendance, and much more. And if you do not have a parent portal account set up, we ask that you please contact the school or the school system's IT help desk, and we'll be able to get you some assistance in creating a parent portal account to fill out these forms online. And we do recognize that not everyone has access to the internet, so we still will provide hard copies of the district documents packet. And if you do not fill out those forms online, we ask that you return the forms back to school by Friday, August 31. The "At Your Fingertips" brochure is a quick reference to promote two-way communication between parents and the school system. It includes contact information for our school board members, district departments, schools, centers, and executive staff members. It also includes the 2018-2019 school board meeting dates, and this is a great brochure to keep handy by your phone. I find myself referencing the brochure quite often. And moving along to our handbook, which Ms. Smith presented some brief changes that were made earlier in the board meeting, but it's also known as our Student Code of Conduct, and it outlines discipline procedures, dress code, and violence prevention, among other things. And schools will review the handbook with students during the first week of classes. The "It's the Law" document covers our district's attendance requirements and absences, which remain the same as last year. And finally, the big reveal of our 2018-2019 calendar, which I know everyone looks forward to receiving. It, of course, includes school and district events by the month. And I'll briefly showcase three pages of the calendar, and you'll notice that, just like the inbox cover, this year's calendar centers around our theme of our AAA school district. It's an opportunity for us to share with the public information on our offerings in academics, athletics, and the arts. And we are fortunate and know that the community of St. Charles Parish values a comprehensive education, where there's something for every student. And each month in the calendar features a word that has an "A" in it, which emphasizes how lessons taught and learned through academics, athletics, and the arts transcend across all aspects of life well beyond graduation. And we'll look at August, which the word "dreams" is featured, where our students are able to fulfill their hopes and dreams through participation in academics, athletics, and the arts. And in December, the word "compassion" is featured, with a picture of Norco Elementary School students on a buddy bench, which many of our schools do have, and they help eliminate loneliness and foster friendships on school grounds. And in May, which always seems to be the busiest, busiest month of the school year, ambition is spotlighted, where our students reach the goal of graduation through years of hard work in school. And I'd like to ask everyone to please review the calendar to learn more about our AAA district, and of course, most importantly, to find dates pertaining to each school and district outlined each month. And the back panel of the calendar, once again, shows the school arrival and departure windows. These are listed by schools, and parents can look here for late-taken times. And I would just like to remind parents that only high schools will have late-taken days this year. Our middle and our elementary schools will have early release days, and that is a change and new for this school year. And this very briefly concludes the 2018-2019 inbox. Again, I'd like to ask everyone to really sit down with their children, go through these items. It's truly a great tool that we're able to provide our parents with to use throughout the school year as a reference for important information pertaining to the district. So I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have at the inbox, or I can move on to our NSPR awards. If there are any questions?
No questions. I would just like to say kudos to you and your staff. The inbox and the enclosed pieces look great. Another outstanding job by you and your staff, so congratulations.
Thank you. It's truly a team effort and something that we look forward to doing every year. So I'll briefly present a recap of our National School Public Relations Association Awards that the Public Information Department received this summer. And for the past several years, the Public Information Department has participated in this national contest. And this year, there were more than 1,000 entries, the largest ever for the contest. And St. Charles Parish Public Schools was honored with 12 NSPR awards for various projects throughout the school year, and the awards are given at three levels: honorable mention, Award of Merit, and Award of Excellence. So I'll start with Award of Excellence, which is the highest award given, and that was received in the Branding and Imaging Package category for our 2018 Teacher of the Year items. An Award of Merit was received for our 2017 Quality Profile, formerly known as the Annual Report to our Community, and this is a document that we release every fall, and it provides our stakeholders with a complete and transparent report on how the school system is performing in areas that matter most to our community. An Award of Merit was also received for our AAA school district branding in the Branding and Imaging Package category. And another Award of Merit was received for our Teachers of the Year Invitation in the Special Purpose Publication category. Another one for our Teacher of the Year pieces in the Special Purpose Publication category was for our Teacher of the Year Event Program. You'll see a lot of our Teacher of the Year pieces were recognized and received awards. We also had two videos, which received an Award of Merit. First was our Principal of the Year video, and second was our Teachers of the Year video titled "An Evening Amongst the Stars." And to conclude with our Honorable Mention Awards, one was received for our 2017-2018 calendar, also for the design of our Student Code of Conduct District Handbook, as well as our back-to-school brochure in the Special Purpose Publication category. Another video, our Students of the Year video, received an honorable mention, and I would like to mention that all the videos that received awards, we produced those in-house. Those are Those are done by the school system and the Public Information Department staff. And last, we also received an honorable mention for our onboard video, which features our school board members and staff members on various topics that we update the public on. And before I conclude, I just want to thank my staff, the Public Information Department. We truly work together. We couldn't do this without a team effort, and of course, without the support of the superintendent and the school board. Not only do you support our efforts with the inbox and all the different pieces we do, but you support our efforts throughout the school year, and we really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Cravetta. And I also want to point out to the board that Ms. Cravetta arrived at about five o'clock this afternoon from the NSPR conference, so that she could be here to present the inbox and also to share with us all the awards that were won. So congratulations, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
The inbox is attractive, it's useful, creative, and I'm sure you'll get many more awards next year from NSPR for that.
Well, we hope so, and as you mentioned at the NSPR conference, a lot of people do approach us and recognize the inbox and how it's such a well-done piece, and I know that we are always excited for it, and I hope our community values it just as much as we do, so we do get a lot of recognition for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At the risk of sounding redundant, I want to reinforce the fact that all parents ought to sign up for Parent Portal, and if you need assistance, we are prepared at the schools and at the district to assist parents in order to sign up for Parent Portal, so please, please do that. School supply lists for elementary and middle schools can be found online. Please visit your school's website to download a copy. School supply lists for high schools vary depending on the individual classes and teachers. High school students will be informed of the supplies needed at the beginning of the school year. We have planned a great kickoff event to the school year. St. Charles Parish Schools is supporting a joint effort with local organizations by participating in a youth rally for parish children, adolescents, young adults, and parents. The youth rally will take place on Saturday, August fourth, from ten until one P.M., and this year will be held at R.K. Smith Middle School. There will be free food, music, and door prizes, along with interesting breakout sessions, and I hope to see you there. As we approach the most active months of hurricane season, we encourage you to have a plan in place in the event of an evacuation. Should St. Charles Parish be ordered to evacuate, parents and employees will be notified and kept informed during the duration of the event using the following media outlets: Blackboard Connect, Cox Cable Channel Eight, Cox Cable Channel Six, AT&amp;T U-verse Channel Ninety-Nine, all four TV stations, WWL eight seventy AM, Facebook, Twitter, and of course, our own website, www.stcharles.k12.la.us. And finally, the Community Education Department Fall two thousand and eighteen Information Card will be mailed to all parish residents the week of July thirtieth. This information card will have a full description of classes, and the registration form will be available on the district's website. The registration will begin on Wednesday, August first, and continue through Friday, August thirty-first. Classes start the week of September seventeenth. If you're ready to learn a new skill, more than one hundred courses will be offered for our Fall Session. For additional information regarding our community education program, please contact our Community Education Department at nine-eight-five, seven-eight-five, seven-two-six-nine. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for that very informative report. If we have no other discussion to come before the board, then adjourn.
Move adjourn.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. We stand adjourned.